I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before we start, I just want to say that unfortunately Mayor Schultz isn't here tonight. As I think everyone here knows, the Schultz family's experienced another death. This is two in just shortly over a year that John's lost his another brother. And not only a brother, but it's Fred and Fred Schultz. A lot of people knew Fred. Fred was on the Hart Board for years here in Decatur. And before we do anything else, I just want to have a moment of silence for the Schultz family. Hope you would please. And I would like to call the meeting to order. We'll have roll call.
Cam Collier.
Here.
Bo Crum.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Pollock.
Here.
And Mayor Proten, Kim Wyer.
Here. I'd like to invite you to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiances.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in her eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of our July 20th meeting were sent out. We have a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Motion approved. First thing we're going to bring up tonight is on behalf of the Maumee River Basin Commission, and Rod Rinconberger is here, our old friend from 2003 that helped the city out so much with our flood relief efforts back then. And Roger Gage and Rod have been working with the public to see if we could submit applications for funding for relief this year. And rather than me ramble on about them, will Rod just come up and tell us what he's got done and what we might be able to do.
Thank you for the opportunity to come back to the hometown of Decatur again. As Ken has indicated, shortly after your flood, just three or four weeks ago, we received a phone call from the state Indiana Department of Homeland Security advising us that they had $400,000 and that we know of a community that could use that $400,000 for acquisitions. And having worked with Roger and down here with the Decatur community, we knew that there were other people that might be interested in getting bought out. And that's when Roger and Nate Rumschlag got together and they started asking individuals if they wanted to participate. We've got about 22 people that have submitted their statement of voluntary participation forms. And based on that, we took our prioritization based on scientific data on those homes that were at the highest risk and put together a preliminary project that we wanted to present to you tonight that would allow us to get five houses and capture that $400,000.
Cool. And explain the $400,000 a little.
Okay. The $400,000 would come from FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. It's all of those FEMA funds are administered in Indiana through the Indiana Department of Homeland Security. And then that particular grant then would require a 25% local match. My board, the Maumee River Basin Commission Board, we are meeting tomorrow night. I am prepared to ask my board to help offset some of that cost share with the city of Decatur like we did back in '06. And working together, we would need to come up with somewhere around $120,000 total between the two communities.
Okay, $120,000. And you said the Maumee River Basin Commission may be able to raise as much as 20,000 to 40,000 on our behalf?
Correct. My recommendation is going to be minimum of 20, maximum of 40, based on the amount of funding that we have available. I'm hoping that they'll slide towards the $40,000 mark and allow us to at least get another project under our belts.
And as for the city's contribution, we could do in-kind services like taking down the houses, the demolition, Roger, any of Roger's time put into it can be.
Yeah, anybody's efforts to keep track of the time and the hours and the truck labor or the equipment, everything goes towards in-kind match.
So say out of the 100, $120,000 that the city would have to come up with, you come up with 20 to 40. What we could take out on the in-kind services, we may have a net amount that we need to find in the budget somewhere of 30 to 50,000 range. Does that sound?
Sounds reasonable.
Okay. So then the next thing comes to the discussion of where we come up with that money. Phyllis?
Well, if you guys think the other projects will happen this year, then we should have the date of.
She's referring to the stellar, whether we. We don't, we won't know if we're going to get the stellar award until August 17th. Rod has to have this in place tomorrow.
Yeah.
So we have to make a decision as to whether or not we can fund this. If we get the stellar award, we won't immediately need the cash.
That's true, but we, I mean, that wasn't, the money that we allocated, the 2.5 over five years is not for stellar project. It was for straight out.
Capital gains.
Right.
Capital improvements.
Which includes the first thing that we might have underway. But yeah, I mean, the money is there for.
There's a way to structure funds.
Yeah. We talked about it in the Board of Works meeting.
Opportunity.
And for example, we have some money left over from an assistance position in Roger's department. And I think that we kind of agreed, didn't we, Phyllis, that we could one way or another try to scrape up the money. Seeing the fact that we have the opportunity to possibly buy out five homes, I think we owe it to our residents to do everything we can to support this.
So are we making a, because we don't know of all that stuff, do we need to make a commitment of up to $100,000? I mean, if we're going to get a minimum of 120, if we're going to get a minimum of 20 and we're not counting in-kind services, do we say 100 or do we go?
Well, not counting in-kind services, it would be approximately 100,000, up to 100,000. However, with the in-kind services, Roger, that can add up pretty quickly, right?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we commit enough that we don't shortchange.
Exactly.
What are your questions, Rod?
We would anticipate if the city would do demolition of the homes through in-kind services, we had estimated that to be worth approximately $35,000 to $37,000. So that would take your cost share down to about 45, 46,000.
Assuming you guys did the full 40.
Yeah. Yeah.
But we want to make sure we have enough allocated and not have to come back to this again. To Cam's point, I think we should put in.
My question to the council is, I want to make sure this is what you want to be prioritized first. Do you want this to be or do you want the capital project? And do you think you'll be extending that share? And your comment was 2015, 2016.
For the capital improvement fund.
Well, but I mean, if we're pursuing the First Street properties, that could happen this year.
True.
I don't think the demolition of Schaefer Building would happen this year because we don't even, I mean, that's not even a conversation we have with the owner, so. I think if we're agreeing that this is an opportunity that we need to take advantage of, then I think we need to commit to it.
I think we need to commit to it, but it's not to come from the capital improvement funding. It's not, that's not what the capital improvement funding is directed toward. That's directed toward the revitalization of the downtown and the First Street projects. Am I right, Cam?
Yeah, but I mean, I guess the question is, if we don't take it from there, where do we, I mean, where's, do we have 60,000 in the budget itself? I mean, the portion from Rogers is only.
So if I understood what Rod said, I'm a little confused about one thing. Are we looking at 100,000 from the city or 120,000 from the city?
Okay. The total, the total match, the 25% match to secure this 400,000 is $120,832. Now, if, right now, as I have it broke down, presuming that my agency can contribute 40,000, Decatur's match would be 80,832, 50. And I was just sharing with Roger, if you do in-kind on the demolition, that would take your portion down to 43,8 as a minimum. But if my agency can only contribute 20, then you'd be up to 63.
Okay. So I think that's the figure you need to be looking at is trying to figure out where you're going to come up with that. And, you know, if you choose to transfer funds from Roger's account, that's going to be roughly 17,000 that you could pull that's already budgeted. So that brings you down to, what, 30 or 46,000?
And your commitment, does it matter where our funds come from? I mean, do they need it from the 35?
From your, the cities?
Yeah.
No, as long as it's on, the commitment is on city letterhead and by resolution at the council.
And those funds, and those funds wouldn't be something that would necessarily be committed yet in 2015 because they're going to actually have to be available in 2016. Is that correct?
Correct.
So you could encumber over probably that line item towards transfer it and encumber it over.
Yeah.
And then, then you would, and if you have that account in 2016's budget, you might be able to pull out that, some of that there too, if you wanted to. That's just, you know, if that's something that's included in the budget.
From, but from the resolution standpoint, that's really what we need to focus on. We need to give direction on a resolution. The resolution needs to say $100,000.
Do we need to, in the resolution, Rod, do we need to break out how much we're actually going to contribute cash and how much we're anticipating?
I think you should.
In-kind?
Yeah.
Okay.
And by the time we write the resolution, we're going to know how much.
Yeah, I would know how much our, my board meets tomorrow night, so we'll know whether it's going to be the, or somewhere.
But in that, in the resolution, do we identify that we're partnering with Maumee River Basin, that we're contributing X dollars towards the local match?
Yes.
So we'll know that then, right? So what we're looking at is a minimum of 35,000 in in-kind and a maximum of 65 cash.
Correct.
What happens if all these funds don't get used? I mean, does it, it goes back to them?
As far as the federal funding?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any unused, it spills, we'll all know.
It reverts back.
Yeah.
Our mass money goes first.
It's hard to say. If you give the grant money, you're going to.
If we pursue the grant and we, you're saying, you're saying that, okay, I think I understand what you're saying. You're saying if we, if we go after the 400,000 and we could, we contribute our 120, however that works out, and we end up spending 480,000, what happens to the remainder?
Right. That, is it, yeah, does our 120 go first?
No, each, how it works is each invoice comes in, whether it's for an appraisal or whether it's for a title search or the actual purchase, it is split literally right down to 25, 75, 25.
Okay. Yeah, so.
So if they don't all add up, the 400, it's not going to be.
It's not like we spent the money for nothing.
Right.
And proportion.
Right. It's pro-rated.
Right. Well, I guess with that, I would make a motion that we prepare a resolution, which is going to be somewhat subject to what we hear from the Maumee River Basin, but that we would be providing a minimum of 35,000 in-kind and 65,000 in matching cash contribution.
I would second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll have a resolution then at the August 18th meeting.
Thank you, Rod, for advocating for Decatur.
Yep. Thank you. We're all working with all of you again.
Yeah. The next thing I have, I want to report something, and that is that I see some people here who are probably here thinking that we're going to have a public hearing tonight in reference to the old city hall. Well, due to some circumstances beyond our control, that's not going to happen tonight. It'll be, it'll happen at the 18th meeting. Tim or Phyllis would want to be on, expound on that reason why?
The, well, there's a question, first of all, whether you even have to have a public hearing. The statute reads that once a determination is made as to whether you're going to sell the property by an auctioneer or a licensed broker, then you have to publish notice of that determination. But I think in talking with the mayor, he asked to go forward with a public hearing because he wanted public input first before council made that decision, one way or the other. Because there have been some discussions about possible uses of the property as, under the city's ownership. In other words, not necessarily selling it, but allowing it to be used or transferred to not-for-profit entities. So I think because there were a lot of different things being considered, the mayor asked that a public hearing be held so the public has the opportunity to weigh in on this before council makes its decision. So the notice, in order to have a public hearing, you have to have that notice published at least 10 days in advance, and that didn't happen for tonight. So it will be held on the 18th.
Regardless, it's nice to have you at our council meeting. Next thing here is, the mayor says we have the Kikianga Festival. We have a letter here from the chamber requesting our help with the donation. Last year, we gave $250 to the Kikianga Festival, and that money came from city council funds. And I think that's probably what we would want to do again this year, if I could have a motion as such.
I move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And then we have another from the Califunkian Committee. They've begun their fundraising efforts, and last year, we supported them with $500, again from council funds. The committee is asking the city to consider a $1,000 donation this year to support the fireworks extravaganza. If this is not possible, we would ask that you consider the $500 donation again this year. Discussion.
I'd make a motion for the $500 donation once again.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. We will donate $500 from council funds to the Califunkian Festival.
With that said, if they want to expand upon the fireworks, the other groups that have done fireworks in town have asked for corporate sponsors and have been pretty successful recently in getting others in the community to pay for that. So I'd encourage them to do so.
Next, we have some street closing requests. The first one is from the St. Mary's Fall Fest, which is Sunday, September 13th. Their letter here says, "We, the Fall Fest Committee of St. Mary's of the Assumption Catholic Church, are requesting the closure of Fifth Street from Monroe to Madison and Madison Street from Fourth to Fifth Street on Sunday, September 13th, from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We will leave the intersection of Fifth and Madison open for the convenience of anyone needing to get down Fifth Street. Thank you for your consideration. We hope to see you at this annual event. Thanks to the Fall Fest Committee." I think we've done this in years past, unless there's someone opposed to it. Do I have a motion to?
Move.
Second?
Right.
Got a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Okay, we have that taken care of. The next street closing is from Ed's Bike and Car Night, which is this, down here on First Street. They did this last year, and I'm looking for, here it is, what he wants to do. He submitted the proper forms, and I believe he just wants to close First Street from Monroe to Jackson Street, starting at 5:30 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. And again, we did that last year for a little festival thing that they have. It's August 27th. Have a motion to approve that.
You move.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Okay, we'll allow that one. And we're not done. We have one more. Blackbird Boutique, which is a new business right down here where Cattered Treasures used to be, most recently. They are having a grand opening. It's Saturday, August 8th. They have also filled out the event application. They're looking at closing the 200 block of North Second Street from 4:00 p.m. until midnight on that same day for a festival-type atmosphere. And this is something new, so if there's any discussion.
Did they, I mean, they say what they're, they're going to have music or? I realize they filled out the form, but.
It does not say. Just the number of people expected? Tons it says.
One, two, three, four, five.
Okay.
So the street already closed?
Okay.
And I think they're, this is an open.
They're just kind of piggybacking off of the wet spots. Okay. All right. Then, all in favor for the grand opening for Blackbird Boutique? Have a motion?
You got a motion.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that's all the street closings I have. Next thing we have is a resolution introducing the LOIT. The LOIT resolution will be Resolution 2015-11. And Tim, would you like to briefly explain?
Can we make the legal?
Yeah. Okay, we need to make the legal notice a matter of record. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Okay. The, in order to make use of the LOIT funds, you have to adopt, actually, there's two things. I think there's also an ordinance, an ordinance establishing the public safety fund, LOIT funds. And then the resolution has to be adopted in order to make use of those funds. And it's in the form of an additional appropriation because those funds were delivered to the city in 2015, but there was no budget adopted for the use of those funds. So in order to make use of those funds in the year 2015, you have to adopt a resolution, which is for an additional appropriation. And then, once this is done, it's submitted to the state for approval.
So what we need, first of all, is a motion to introduce this resolution.
That's correct. And basically, what it does is it identifies your intent to buy or use LOIT funds for acquisition of supplies in the amount of 40,000, services and charges of $38,575, and capital outlays of $215,500, or a total of $294,750. If you adopt the resolution as it's prepared, then you're approving those funds, and that's what you're requesting in the form of an additional appropriation.
I'm not sure anybody else is fully prepared to introduce the resolution, since you always do it.
No, this is, well, that ordinance is.
Oh. This is a resolution, that'll count. Who's right? I'll make a motion to.
Introduce.
Introduce Resolution 1511 by short title.
No, it's, no.
Introduce.
Resolution.
Let me try that again.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Read away, Tim.
Okay, it's Resolution Number 2015-11, additional appropriation.
Okay, now we need a motion to pass Resolution 2015-11.
So moved.
Second. And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 2015-11 has been passed. Now, we go to the LOIT ordinance, which is Ordinance 2015-10. And again, we want to introduce the ordinance, have it read, and hopefully passed on all three readings this evening. So if I could have a motion to introduce Ordinance 2015-10.
So moved.
And a second. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion was by short title.
By short title, yes.
Thank you. Ordinance Number 2015-10, short title, an ordinance establishing a LOIT Local Option Income Tax Public Safety Fund for the City of Decatur, Indiana.
Motion to pass Ordinance 2015.
I told you we can't do this without you. I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2015-10 on first reading.
A short title.
By short title.
Second. All in favor, or we need a roll call vote?
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Bo Crum.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Pollock, Cam.
Yes.
Do you get a vote?
I have no idea.
No? Okay.
Okay. That's been passed on its first reading.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2015.
Introduce.
Introduce Ordinance 2015-10 by short title, or it passes on its second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Second. Motion carried. Tim?
Okay.
I missed John.
Ordinance Number 2015-10, short title, an ordinance establishing a LOIT Local Option Income Tax Public Safety Fund for the City of Decatur, Indiana.
Now we need to pass it on its second reading. If someone would like to make that motion.
I'll make a motion to pass it on its second reading.
And a second by Bill. All in favor, or we need a roll call vote? There we go.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Bo Crum.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Pollock, Cam.
All right, now we need to introduce it on its third reading by short title.
You may make the motion to suspend the rules and adopt it on third and final reading by short title.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Tim?
Ordinance Number 2015-10, short title, an ordinance establishing a LOIT Local Option Income Tax Public Safety Fund for the City of Decatur, Indiana.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2015-10.
On third and final reading.
Final reading.
Second.
You got a motion in a second? I need a roll call vote.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Bo Crum.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Pollock, Cam.
Yeah, Ordinance 2015-10 has been adopted. Okay. Now we get to the fun part, and that is going over the 2016 proposed budgets. And I'm going to let Phyllis take the lead on this. All the council members were given copies of next year's budget from all the department heads, and we will go through them department by department. And like I said, Phyllis, I have support.
First budget for the mayor's. His budget total is $106,705. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
He has on here that the changes to his budget was he added the community coordinator to the budget, which increased salaries, office supplies, phone, mileage reimbursement, and promotional activities. I don't know how much it was last reading.
It's on the, it's on the spreadsheet. Increased by 50,000, primarily due to our community coordinator.
Any questions on the mayor's budget?
Nope.
Okay. Phyllis?
Okay, the next budget for the poor treasure, and that totals $128,000. thousand, fifty dollars. And, um-
Has an increase of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and eight dollars.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm requesting for an additional deputy, um, due to the various grants, future annexations for the projects for Stellar Main Street and Redevelopment Commission. And the other change is to increase the cost for computer consulting, software contract, and legal notices.
What, what will this deputy clerk be doing that Melissa would not be doing? And I thought that's why we heard it, to take care of all that.
Well, it starts with her, but it always fits up in my office still, 'cause I still have the software for programs for the budget, payroll, and everything else for that.
But-
It's still, we're still responsible for the final paperwork. But if Melissa wants to join me, I take her.
Oh, you have time, right? But the, but the grant administration stuff, that would not be in her part.
Well, I, I, I still do it, no matter what. I mean, Melissa gets it started, probably, but I still end up with me. I still will help the paperwork. I still, the responsibility of clerk treasurer.
The accounting, financial-
Right.
Side of it all. Is this clerk, is that the clerk full-time?
Well, I, I haven't really decided. I'm thinking I probably would use one full-time, but until, I mean, just to see how things go, I'd start them out part-time first, and then see how that goes.
I, I guess I'm just a little confused, 'cause I thought the whole purpose of having a grant administrator on the team, and then when we would hire, 'cause we're, she wouldn't be the only one, with consultants, whoever would be, that they're the ones that manage that entire process and take care of, I mean, obviously, bill paying has to go through clerk treasurer.
Right, well, like, um, Roger's grant, that'll go through me. And grants you do through the Redevelopment Commission, that'll go through me. And you have those homes that you'll, or properties you take down, so it goes through my office.
Projects for Stellar, Main Street projects, uh, annexations, all of that.
Yeah, reporting.
We're talking a lot more next year than normal, the next few years, actually.
We're, I'm jumping way ahead here, but Jeremy, you've, you've made a request for an employee to become full-time. What, what do you have in mind for, that she's going to be doing extra?
Um, basically, what we're running into now is she's backed out on her hours, so what she doesn't have time to do, I've been doing a lot of it. Uh, there's more things that we need to do, we need to track. Um, she's involved, she comes up here a lot, or has come up here a lot to fill in with the, with the clerk's office, or the utility clerk's office and such. When Kate directly left in the spring, she came up here to work, probably. Um, she's helped a little bit every night. She was very active with coop, initiating the coop plan, all that additional things that, that, um, you know, needs to be done on a daily basis.
Would it be assisting in the clerk treasurer's office be, or is that too much additional?
Uh, we'd have to see how things go. Like, right now, she's averaging twenty-five hundred hours a week. I'm not saying that it's not workable, but we would, gonna have to point out and see, you know, timing-wise, you know, how, how much additional, um, time that she would have, you know, available. Like, right now, she's maxed out on her time due to the part-time requirements. It's hard to commit right now without knowing exactly the-
When were you thinking about it in the staff?
Um, I wouldn't do it until the new year, 'cause I don't have enough in the budget to pay for it.
Any further discussion on clerk treasurer's budget?
Well, I mean, is this, we're, we're hiring somebody, we're not knowing if we're gonna have all this work to do, or we, we?
I have it right now. I mean, I'm doing all this right now. The annexations, the grants, the Main Street, the Redevelopment Commission.
And you're backed up with work, is what you're saying?
Well, yeah, I work ten to twelve hours a day, and then on weekends, so.
Moving on to law.
I didn't change anything. I'm not sure if Tim will be here next year or not, but I don't know if you guys are gonna change the way we do things for next year, or just leave it as is.
I think that's all we can do for now. Mr. Baker and his office have not, certainly overbuilt the city, they've underbuilt the city for the amount of time that Tim is, and effort that Tim puts in, year after year, and it's appreciated. Appreciate that. Next department would be police. Police's budget is actually a little less, but there may be some, does the LOIT have some things that are that great?
Yes. Vehicle, we're gonna be taking out LOIT versus general budget.
And some equipment, too, will be in the LO, in the LOIT, too, for next year. Want some of your equipment taken out, too.
Yes.
Where do you have some? Will be in the LOIT budget now.
Phyllis, you have a mouthful of last year's, uh, police. The budget for next year is one million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-two. What other one did you want, Paul?
And the Department of Law is fifty-four thousand, four sixty-two.
We can get you a copy.
I can get you a copy.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
She has a cover sheet. Any other discussion, please?
I'm sorry, I didn't put that for you.
Next would be the fire department. Fire department also has a slight decrease of a little over nine thousand dollars, and again, I would imagine less, that's because of the LOIT tax that we're gonna be taking advantage of.
Les, how, how did you, I mean, I know that were the expenses changing in the, from the LOIT. Had you previously accounted for, were you planning on buying that grass truck this year in 2016?
No.
So that's, I mean, that's really a new, it was in the long-range plan, but-
LOIT makes a pot-
It was by, by Christie and our five-year plan.
Right.
And, uh, through discussion with Greg and I and, and the mayor, was, uh, you know, to look at that five-year plan and try to buy our, our capital purchases out over that five years.
How, how much is in, this is kind of separate, what, how much is in the non-reverting fund now?
It should be somewhere around eighty plus, is that?
That's after two, two or three years?
That would, we would probably be starting to get our third draw-
Third.
From the townships, yeah. So that's it, and, and when we get to the LOIT budget, um, that's a partial on the grass truck.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
You got, it's all on the-
We were figuring on dividing that between, kind of, a low it, and, uh, and the balance is gonna be, I hate to say a number, because-
Yeah.
I don't have any hard numbers for that.
Okay.
There's almost a hundred thousand in the fire and non-reverting.
So, yeah, the non-reverting, we have townships, at what balance?
Hundred, almost a hundred.
A hundred?
Okay, thank you.
The only question I have, Les, is you add up your paid-on call, um, overtime, at some point, does it even out, not paying as much overtime and hiring another fireman?
What was, I, I think that's what we need to look at, uh, next year.
It seems like that keeps creeping up.
We're getting to a point where, um, how do I say this without putting myself on the spot, but, um, you know, we're starting to get twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty years' service, which gives benefits, so hiring a new person initially would, would help with our relief pay, but eventually, they, you know, they get, they get time off, and, you know, as Kenny always used to say, uh, comp time greets comp time, so we're really better to, to, you know, hire.
So may, maybe next year, continue to monitor?
Well, yeah, I'm a little reluctant, I mean, Greg and I's conversation with the mayor was, until we see how low it's going to continue to be funded, reluctant to pay payroll, or commit any kind of payroll money from LOIT at this point, I mean, maybe down the road, it could be an option, but until we get a few years of, uh, of numbers to know how much fluctuation there's gonna be, I believe we need to have a cash balance in the LOIT for bigger projects, for long-term projects, so.
It sounds like, and I appreciate your write-up, because it sounds like training is becoming a bigger issue, like the amount of training that's being required, being mandated, and that in, in a rising expense?
Yeah, because, uh, with, with only two people on shift, most, not most days, but a lot of days, every third day is a two-man day. So, just like tomorrow night, uh, for our training, in order for us to do a, a drill or a hands-on type, um, I still have to have two people committed to make the run, plus paid-on call, so it makes it really, but we're really letting the rest of the full-time people out of that loop, because we're, we're paying the overtime for training. But I can't do the drills and the exercises without full-time people, um, being, you know, being there at training, so really need to look at, you know, when I can, could make a mandatory training that they could be paid, because we're, we're really missing some key training requirements that are required by OSHA and required by, um, ISO.
So the, so the issue isn't the expense of the training as much as the expense of the personnel that need to be there?
Right.
Could it be overtime?
It is, you know, it's paying the off-duty overtime to train.
I don't remember what our, I'm just sure, then, in theory, that could come through LOIT as well, right?
Yeah.
Yes, public safety.
Can it come through the non-reverting fire fund? Or is that, I, I would go back and look at that. That was equipment only?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the fire department? Next is the city hall budget. Which is also a little less than last year, six thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars less than last year. You know, where's that come from, Phyllis?
Really, the only thing that changed was, um, maybe half carpet and red cleaning for professionals to do it, um, just because we're covering more area than the old city hall, but that's really not a change.
But it went down, though.
Yeah. Um, I think, uh, we had to take, I think we took things down.
Maybe budgeted a little too much this year.
I did, because I made it-
Oh, we didn't know.
Yeah, we were paying on both.
I thought it was the energy efficiency of our new windows.
And we didn't know how much it would be here, yeah.
That's right. Next is Roger's department, building and planning. Building and planning, uh, has an increase of seventy-six thousand, five hundred.
And, I kinda helped Roger do his, so-
Okay.
Um, I did increase the GIS specialist. Uh, we have no clue yet how much his benefits are gonna be, and we pay for, um, the software and his benefits, and a salary, a portion, half of it, everything. And the county won't know their insurance renewal until the first of the year, so it's just an estimate in there. And then I did put a full amount for, uh, an assistant superintendent back in there for Roger, so. And then the unsafe building fund. Um, we normally budget fifty thousand, and the mayor requested to increase it up to a hundred thousand, due to the first demolition of first-rate properties, you know, I don't know. I don't know, and I said to you guys, if you want even more than that, I mean, I can go ahead and try to budget for that, if you do wanna change your-
It seems like we're encountering more and more unsafe buildings.
Yes, we are, unfortunately.
I would almost rec, the mayor requested fifty to a hundred, I would recommend even fifty.
We do also have an unsafe building fund, too, that we established years ago, um, that there, I don't think there's a whole lot in it.
Am I correct, and that's where the assistant superintendent's money typically ended up? When, didn't the assistant superintendent's money typically end up in the unsafe building fund? Wouldn't that, no?
Well, did we?
Some, sometimes-
We adjusted something, yeah. Yeah, I think we, I think we took it out of there, a portion of it.
A portion of it, yeah.
And, and increasing, 'cause I think it was used to be twenty-five thousand. Yeah, I think you're right. Yeah, we have an unsafe building fund, but it's only like twelve thousand.
Isn't that what we did, like, that may, do a math here. That's why, I think that's why we came up with seventeen. Yeah.
Going from fifty to a hundred, is that sufficient? Is that, you know, is- I would rather see us go a hundred and fifty. If we don't spend it, if approved, the state, and if we don't have the expenditures, it's not like the money spent, it reverts back to the general fund.
Does our assistant superintendent line item provide us that flexibility?
It could, if you don't have to use it for other purposes. Do we?
Mitigation, my, water mitigation down there. We talked about, you know, where we're gonna get the management mitigation. Do it more than we ever least.
Well, that was this year.
Yeah, but didn't he say nothing? That was just-
For a commitment.
There'll be nothing done this year.
It'll actually be done next year.
It'll be done next year.
Right there, forty-four plus seventeen gives us a sixty-five.
All right. Anyone's opinion on, uh, Matt, Matt was more immersive in raising it to a hundred and fifty, is?
I have no problem with that, like Matt said, it's not approved, it's not approved. If we have it, we don't, it's there.
It's counted.
But if we have a problem, is, we won't be looking for it.
Need a motion for that, right?
I guess I just have a question. When you say it's not approved, it's not approved, who are you saying that they-
State has to approve the project. We're gonna send this entire budget-
Give us our initials again, Phyllis.
DLGF. It's hard to have local government funding. You'd be such a-
Be honest.
And don't get right back to us, Phyllis.
I guess I'm new to this, like, we're just preparing it for them to look at, and they come back and say, you can or can't do this?
And it's not that we can or can't, it's whether we have the funds to do it, 'cause we can only increase our budget two-point-six percent this year, and so we're allowed.
And Tyler, we'll be well into next year before we know whether, what they approve. But usually, it's what, about April?
No, February fifteenth.
It's really an efficient system.
We always hope they approve it, 'cause we may have spent it.
All right, so we're making a motion to increase the hundred, hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand for the unfit building removal?
Yes. Second?
Second.
Two hundred, from a hundred to a hundred.
From fifty, it was fifty, and we're gonna increase it to a hundred. You got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Carry. All right. Moving right along, parking control is next.
There's no change. There's no change in that.
Okay, no change in parking control. Sanitation? Sanitation is also down fifty-three thousand. Where's the decrease in that come from?
Um, Jeremy?
Jeremy, remember?
I'm going to come over some money at the end of this year to offset the purchase of a new garbage box that will be purchased this year. It's been offset, offsetted the amount eventually, this level of investment technology and not replacing the drugs, so. We're replacing everything behind the cap, that's one of the problems.
Good.
There's, uh, deduction with that, which gives us more technology, gives us more options going forward with sanitation.
Fantastic.
Good job.
Any other comments on sanitation? Next department's common council? Which went down fifty-six thousand?
It's decreased, um, due to, um, I don't have the city budget or the city election in there this year, and we have it this year, and then I lowered because, um, our cap loss and what they're estimating was a lot less. So, that's what part of the decrease. Um, oh, and another change was Adams County Council on Aging is requesting an increase. How much was it additional? I think five hundred. Five hundred more for this year.
It was thirteen, one thirteen five.
Yeah.
And that's building that, and sixteen.
I think I have it under professional services.
So, so the real savings, so to speak, is the cap loss?
Yeah. Which is a direct result of the Loewett increase, because a quarter, one half of that increase, or it went up a half a percent, quarter of a percent goes to public safety, a quarter of a percent goes to offsetting the impact of the property tax gap. So that's the reason why it's.
And so if your taxes are lower, then you're not hitting the cap.
Correct.
Or hitting the cap.
Okay. Next department, the MVH Street Fund, which is up a hundred and five thousand.
That's where Jeremy's requesting to hire.
Full-time helper.
Yeah, well, she's part-time now and wants to make her full-time. And I think operating supplies are going up, market increases.
Recursion maintenance up a little bit, running up a little bit.
Jeremy, if we were to, uh, put a sandbag machine, Hank Mares requested that Decatur have at least one more sandbag machine from the, is that where, we would put that in here?
What we talked about in the board works meeting is, you need, if you're gonna do that, you need to do it this year to be able to get the discounted price. 'Cause once Universal Metal Craft starts making them, you're gonna have to have that, be on that order at, at that point. So, in all reality, if, if you commit yourself to doing it, you need to do it this year to be able to get to, what is it?
Thousand dollar, twelve hundred dollar discount. Do you have a ten thousand dollars in your budget?
Not this year.
So would you recommend us find the money in other areas as possible?
If you can, if you can, if that's what you choose to do this year, um, now would be the time to do it. I wouldn't wait and go into next year because you wouldn't get the discount.
Yes, my question is, is this a Decatur problem or a county problem? I mean, where do you draw the line where Decatur pays for all of it and then everybody else uses it?
Well, in Hank's proposal, he said Decatur needs at least one. He really thought there was three needed in the county.
We, we have one now that we're gonna make some upgrades to. So we bought that several years back, Hank would pay, what, close nine hundred dollars for it or something. But, you know, it was used and it's very workable, it just needs a few things done to it. Well, in, in June was the first time we ever had to use it, and we've had it three years probably, four years.
No, we didn't probably use it.
It, it broke.
Okay.
It, it did go to Geneva for a few hours the day before. They didn't break it. It came back, it was functioning, but it had some issues. Don't know if it was just resetting or what, but we've addressed those issues and we're going, we, we will make some further improvements going forward, so.
I guess I, I just regarding, sorry, back to your, just the, the budget. You've identified some, where some of the increases are, but, um, I'm guessing, am I missing, is there a bigger increase somewhere? Because, I mean, like, adding the full-time, part-time to full-time doesn't.
Basically, it, it's, um, it's a little bit paving, not a lot, but a, a little bit. Adding the, moving the, the, the part-time to full-time, and then just some general market increases, fuel, stuff like that, so.
But I'm just trying to figure out how that adds up to a difference of a hundred thousand. 'Cause I'm, I'm not, I mean, your, your other stuff is so minute, I mean, it's like five thousand dollars plus part-time. I, I don't have it in front of me, I, I don't view it, but.
There was some in equipment, um, a little bit paving, the operating supplies increased due to the market, and then the biggest thing was the employee.
Salary, he's got more and more employees under his department. Just raise increases.
Yeah. Ken Phyllis is looking at Lester's budgets.
His salary and wages went from eighty-seven to four fourteen.
Okay.
The benefit went from a hundred eighty-three to two hundred fifty-five.
I'll do it. There.
Yep. 'Cause, like I said to rest, I'm pretty minute. I've had a similar budget for the last several years that works. You know, that's pretty much what we stay with, is, it does work. And it also reflects revenue coming in, so.
So your recommendation is not to put a sandbag machine in here?
If you do, you're gonna pay the full price next year, which is almost ten thousand dollars. If you wait till next year.
If you're gonna buy one, do it this year.
And we don't have the money for that this year, so.
I don't have any, anywhere, no. But, but do we need one?
Yeah.
We operated, we operated a little different than what Hank did out there.
Okay.
I, I think we're a little bit efficient with the way we did it, but, you know.
Do you think your system worked?
I think my system worked. So, and some people disagree, some people agree, you know. I've talked to other communities, they've done it the same way.
So, so the go-between is fix the one we have?
Yeah, and, and we are gonna fix it, we have it in the shop, and it's just the timing to get it in, so.
Appreciate your honesty, we just, from the council level, you know, the flood, when it floods, it impacts a lot of people, and we wanna support the efforts of those that are right there. 'Cause it seems like it's more and more reoccurring, so if conditions change, please come to us.
Yeah, okay.
Clear where you're at. Okay. Next department's park and rec?
Not a lot of changes with park and rec, it was also another real workable with the rev, with the revenue that we have to work with.
Yeah, very little change, it was down a little bit, so. Okay. Uh, these next few, we even discussed them, federal, the fire, pension, pension.
Not really. The city has to fund it, um, we have to put the cost up front, and then the state reimburses this for, well, not the, the current fire and policemen are, their per benefit is paid out of the pension plan. The state doesn't reimburse us for that, but they do reimburse us for the salaries for independent, for in that pension plan. So, it's really, I mean, is there any need to discuss it, much you need to?
I don't, anybody have anything on the police or fire fund, pension funds?
They, they are what they are.
They are what they are. How about the CCD or?
Um, well, I, I just put in, um, for capital improvements, I have in there two hundred thousand, and that goes to help cover the capital project. Um, 'cause I figured we'd probably use the CCD fund and CEDA. I'm guessing. And we have to pay our general obligation bond, that's our new city hall here.
Let me, let me, it's kinda jumping ahead, but I noticed in the Loewett that we have two years of.
Bond payment.
Bond payment.
Yeah, just the ones due January one. So I have to pay it in December. And the other one's due in July. That's why I have them like that. The one's the police, OSHA, that's the bond, and the other one's the city hall.
I just, why don't we have, why don't we have two on the?
Well, I think I put it in, one of them has, maybe it's in the riverboat?
Oh, 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 oh.
That's my July.
Gotcha, okay.
'Cause I kinda separated them to pay for them.
Yep, 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 okay. Yes, riverboat.
Yeah.
Okay, so that takes us down through all the budgets with tax, like tax rates. Lowet, local road and street, law enforcement, riverboat, many days, TCI. Do we have any comments or questions on any of those?
I'm just curious, I mean, I know you sent this part out, but what is the, if we're talking about building up a, um, a stockpile in Loewett, what is the proposal or the anticipated revenue? 'Cause from the Loewett, we've got three hundred and sixty-one allocated.
For?
To spend.
Spend.
But what?
For sixteen or sixteen.
For sixteen. So what are we?
Hundred and eight thousand we're putting away for you.
Are we, though? What's the, the anticipated revenue for the Loewett?
Um, we won't know.
You won't know.
They didn't have that. So I'm just going by what we've received this year.
Which is kinda.
Four hundred twenty-four thousand.
Yeah, it's kinda fluctuate based on the economy.
So, all right, there's eighty, a difference of, if, if it was the same as this year, we have eighty that we're putting aside.
Yeah, right.
And that's where, until we go through it a couple of years, police and fire won't know how to budget until we see the full impact. I mean, it's a positive.
But we haven't budgeted all of it.
Right. But it's all based on what we did, not what they're.
Positive to the city, but we'll know moving forward.
I mean, normally, they, they usually tell you to be conservative in your estimates, so they, I know the, the LGF basically says, take ninety percent of the prior year and use that as a figure if you don't have an actual certified amount. So realistically, you know, if you're four twenty-three, then you're probably around three eighty at ninety percent. Um, you know, and, and that's, that's probably the least amount that you could expect. It could be as much or more than what you have.
So from that perspective, we're still, have been conservative, we've covered the, the need out of it, but we would anticipate that we're going to get several, not, maybe not a hundred thousand, but off the close.
Right.
I don't know that we've actually voiced this, but what is the goal? I mean, how much are we trying to get in that fund?
For large expenses, we were talking about, if they need a ladder truck, stuck in a million bucks. I don't know, would a million bucks buy you a ladder truck? An aerial ladder?
It, it would, it, it would be close.
Yeah. Now, it was the one we got.
Yeah, how much life do you have left in the one now?
It's ninety, yeah, it, it piled as ninety-seven, so.
Is our building ninety-six?
If they, if they.
What's the life expectancy once?
Well, you know, I think we need to look back at when we bought our first custom cab, which would been ladder truck. If we approached council, the difference between putting that ladder truck on a commercial cab or on a custom was the fact that in twenty to twenty-five years, that truck could be refurbished versus replaced. And, you know, and to refurbish the ladder right now, you know, it sounds, sounds astronomical, but probably, you know, three hundred thousand in five years refurbished on that ladder truck, you're good for another twenty. So, you know, you're, you're seven hundred thousand to the good. Now, as part of our reasoning behind, uh, not using commercial chassis, but using custom chassis, because they're, they were more apt to being refurbished than being ten, fifteen years over normal twenty-two to twenty-five year window, so.
So is that three hundred thousand refurbished price tag coming in about five years?
Yeah, it, it should be considered.
But you got another pump, is that, you said in your notes, even on four, is that the other tanker?
Uh, one on four is the other engine.
Other engine, for that potential need to replacement as well?
Yeah, and that's, in my, in my letter, uh, I think we would need to look at possibly eliminating two vehicles and, and combining them into like a rescue engine. So we're not, we would not have a rescue truck without a pump. And another engine is, we would consolidate that into one vehicle, eliminate a vehicle, but make a more purpose vehicle to replace a rescue and engine.
Just, when we purchase that truck, can I track the ninety signal and make a purchase? That truck command a five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars.
This combination truck that you just mentioned, Les, is that something that you're looking to have paid out of the Loewett funds that are being set aside, or is that something that you're budgeting for?
I, I think we're looking at Loewett and, and, and by revert, reverting the township money, it also gives the, with that fund, too, it gives the township an opportunity to kinda pay a little of their own way, too, versus the city being responsible for the whole, the whole cost of the truck that's gonna be used in the four townships and in the city. So, it's, you know, it's a good use of combination of Loewett and, you know, if we take a grass truck out of the township this, this coming year, and we would go three or four more years, we're back up to a hundred thousand, defray a hundred thousand of that four hundred thousand dollar combination of a rescue engine, um, you know, defray part of that again with the township reverting fund also.
What are you talking about doing the combination vehicle?
Uh, I think we kinda talk about between twenty, two thousand twenty or twenty-one, so possibly.
So you're looking four hundred thousand, thereabouts, five hundred?
In my head, we would, we would have two vehicles that would be worth more than what the old tankers, and we're talking a couple vehicles to, to sell on the market that are gonna be worth together thirty, forty thousand dollars also. So, we're, we're kind of at a point now where our rescue and the oldest engine have some fair market value left that could be put towards that to.
So within the next five years, you're looking at potentially six to seven hundred thousand in order to refurbish the ladder truck and replace the two and combine it into the one vehicle? So that ought to give you an idea of what you need to try to sock away.
In the perfect world, we would save a hundred thousand years of that. Spend the rest.
All right, the ladder would be good. If we're, if we're looking at a five-year plan right now, we're probably not looking at the ladder in this, in this two thousand sixteen plus five, we would be looking at, you know, six plus, I think. That only puts it at twenty-five years.
If you did roughly a hundred thousand a year, it'd probably put you on track to be able to significantly fund both of those.
Well, I guess.
Future discussion. Fellas, the only question I have on the riverboat, it's down 35,000, where's that? Any idea why?
I think I just budgeted, all I budgeted was the payment, and I don't know. I'm not sure why, but I couldn't tell you. I'd have to look what I have before.
Any other comments on Loet, local road and street, local law, riverboat, rainy day, or CCI?
Oh, it might, because they used 55% of the bond payment instead of 100%, last year.
Les?
How long is the, how long is the debt service on the PDE? Like, how long are we looking at the debt service on our?
20 years.
I think it's 20 years.
Is it 20 years?
This facility and the PDE. Mary?
Yeah.
It's 20 years.
The bond issue is 20-year bond.
The bond issue for the combined project is 20 years.
We would have the option of 10 years to-
Pay it all.
Start paying it down.
No other comments on the budget? Yes, there are no other comments to the budget, we'll move on. Thankfully.
I will mention that we will have a public hearing on the budget on September 15th. County council will review our, our budget non-binding review on September 17th, and budget adoption will be October 6th. And then we'll still need to pass salary ordinance for the employees and the elected official. If you wanna change the elected official, it needs to be done before November 2nd, so.
The next thing is the mayor's report. John has a few things down here. I think we all concur that the stellar award process, the presentation last Thursday, July 30th, went really well. All the people that did presentations, I think did a great job from what I could see. So, thanks to the Greater Decatur Committee, the Main Street Decatur Committee. Thanks to Mayor's Henry from Fort Wayne and McKean for coming down and showing their support. And anyone else we need to thank on this? Cam, what were thanking?
I mean, the whole, all city employees have helped out, and got the place looking good.
I would, I would give kudos to Melissa too, she did a great job.
Absolutely, I mean, it was, I don't know, we put our best foot forward.
Yep.
I think we conveyed everything we wanted to convey. Feel good about it, but-
We learned as much as we could from the year before, and I think it definitely showed that we were more prepared. I think Melissa, to echo Tim's comments, definitely helped. We were coordinated and we looked like we knew exactly what we were doing, so, thank you.
Also, earlier this evening, the Board of Works approved having a survey done of the old city hall property. There's a little uncertainty where the property of the old city hall ends and the parking lot behind it begins. So, I believe we need council's approval to-
Go ahead and fund the survey.
The survey.
It's probably your-
So, move. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Okay, we'll get a survey down at the old city hall, so we know all the particulars we need to have. And lastly, on the mayor's report is, take notice of the new art out in the hallway, on our art wall. Curtis Rose has a real nice display out there of some of his woodworking. And as always, I think, I think the wall of art looks great. And thanks to Mary for spearheading that whole little idea. Yes, and lastly, on the mayor's report, Chad, you've been sitting here patiently this whole time. This is National Farmers Market Week. And Chad is here, Chad is A number one farmer's market, guy from Decatur's Farmers Market, and basically every other area market around the county here. I'll just read a small portion of this. Farmers markets are more than just an outlet for fresh produce and friendly farmers. According to the United States Department of Agriculture Statistics, these grassroots venues have increased in number by over 60% since 2009 to nearly 8,500 today. These markets preserve farmland, stimulate local economies, increase access to fresh nutritious food, improve community health, and promote sustainability. It goes on and on, but overall, we just wanna recognize and make it a matter of record if we could that this is National Farmers Market Week. So, move.
Second that.
Chad, do you have any comments?
Just want the council to know that since, over 2014 to 2015, we've gained 12 new vendors.
Here today, we've got 31 different registered vendors, and we had a total of 47 last year, so.
I think we'll learn from that number this year.
Thank you for spearheading it, a lot of people enjoy it. You know, just shows, when we want something, some people step up and make it happen, so we appreciate it.
Thursday afternoons, 3:30 to 3:06, First Street Park Lot. Be there.
That is all from the mayor's report, department heads' reports. Great. Mike, you keeping him in line?
Nothing, nothing.
Les? You've said enough, Nate? I can't see driver. Dan? Jeremy? I think you're already good out of here, aren't you? Long meeting. Okay, comments from council members? Comments from the public? Melissa? I forgot you. Tim? Phillips?
Tim, I will say, mine, Elm Street, paving law, really helped out a lot. Because I drive along that street every day, and it's so much better than it was.
Jeremy? There you go.
Not quite done yet, but it's, it should be all completed here on the other region.
That one, there are a portion of 11 or 12 you did too? 11, I think, yeah. But it's so much nicer, I can keep all my cars on my level when I go to the streets.
Yeah, there's like six or seven areas.
No other comments from the public? We have a motion to approve the claims.
Take a motion to approve claims.
Motion to approve the claims.
Second.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve, return.